I'd like to call to order the city council meeting and ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll, please.
Belzak.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Clistic. Sullivan.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum. Takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. This has been in our agenda for a number of years. It allows residents who have something they want to present that's not on our agenda to come forward and, and present it. Is there anyone who would like to present anything not on our agenda or on our agenda? Obviously not. We'll go to the approval of our minutes for October 3rd, 2022. I ask for a motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Minutes have been approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications? Eric.
Yeah, I have two items here. First, I had a homeowner on Wakefield Drive that requested a special tree trimming because the branches were blocking the sidewalk. I contacted Dan and the very next day that issue was taken care of. There was another homeowner on Wakefield Drive who had a parkway tree replacement. He was scheduled for next year. He was hoping to move it up this year. I spoke with Dan again and that got moved up to this year. So the thing is, I want to encourage residents to make sure they reach out to their alderman when they do have issues because, you know, the city has a great staff that will take care of things immediately if they're made aware of it. So, reach out to your alderman because things do get done very quickly.
You know, just as a, as an add-on to that, I got a phone call last week from a gentleman who left a voicemail and he said that he called Regina in the morning about a tree in his front yard that needed some trimming. And when he came home that afternoon after being out the rest of the day, it was done. And he said, "I've been here 23 years." He says, "There's no other place I would live than Darien." And he said, "Someone should thank that woman and someone should thank your public work staff for the great job they did." So that's, I mean, what you're saying is true, Eric.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mary?
I'll piggyback on that. I did get, and it's happened a couple times since spring, but I was alerted of some graffiti that was along Lamont Road and it's been a couple different spots. And, I mean, I texted Dan just because I was maybe not at home or I was in the car. And a couple times it was not even on, like, it was on maybe a utility box that belonged to somebody, but not necessarily the city, but in all cases, Public Works took care of getting rid of it pretty quickly. And I appreciate that. So, thank you for your responsiveness.
Yeah, I think it has to be said. I, I've had people tell me that they can't, this gentleman told me the other day. He says, "I live on a street where it's unincorporated, three houses down from mine. And my neighbor down the street wants to know why my street's always clean and his isn't." And he says, "Well, I pay my taxes in Darien." Great job, Dan.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now, the guys know that too. I think we've got to go to you. Yep.
Anyone, nobody else? Okay. It takes us then to the mayor's report. And like I said, in the work session, this is the time of year that we make our appointments and reappointments. And the first group that we're going to deal with is the reappointment of members. Consideration of a motion to approve the reappointment of members to the Citizen of the Year Committee. Linda Baroviac, Bonnie Cussera, Jerry Cussera, and Carol Mailers. We'll do the new appointment separate. Correct, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to approve. Mary, seconded by Tom. Any questions or comments? Tom Belzak. If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn. Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
And why don't we do the second one, then we'll have them all come up together.
Okay.
I'm asking for a consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Kerry Spitsnagle to the Citizen of the Year Committee. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Could the reappointments as well as the new appointment all come forward, please? It is nice to have continuity on this committee. It really is. Thank you, Bonnie.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Citizen of the Year Committee according to the best of my ability. Okay, I have reappointment cards, but Kerry, I need you to sign this one, please.
Hi, Kerry.
Linda. Thank you. Bonnie. Jerry. Carol. Thank you. And this is for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yay. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
The application process, I believe, starts immediately. Pardon me? November 1st, and that will be online at the city website. And Bonnie, what is your cutoff date, then?
Tuesday, January 3rd.
Okay. January 3rd. And I want to make it clear to everybody that there is an application. If you have an individual in mind for Citizen of the Year, you need to fill out that application with as much information and detail as you can. We, you know, a lot of people go with that application. They say, "I think this person is a great person. They walk their dog every day and they pick up whatever when they're supposed to." And that's not it. What's important is that you document things that person has done over a period of time. So, I, I just want to remind people of that. And this committee only can choose from those applications. They don't sit back and say, "Well, gee, we like this person. Let's pick this person." I want to clear up any misinterpretations of what a Citizen of the Year is. It's someone who's nominated by someone in this community. And this committee goes through all of those nominations and then selects the person that they feel is most deserving. So, let's get those applications in, as many as we can. Give them some work to do so they have some great people to choose. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. And you know what? I have a feeling that none of these people are here. Consideration of a motion to, to reappoint Alan Jacobek, Heather Conroy, Ryan Grace, Deb Hartke, and Alita Pecknick to the Environmental Committee. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne, go ahead.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
And we'll have to get all of them at a meeting of the Environmental Committee. They'll all have to be sworn in. All right. Finally, and I'm real happy about this appointment. This is a guy who has served on this committee for a long time and I'm glad. He's going to give us a few more years on that committee and that is a consideration of a motion to reappoint Frank Novarini to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Motion to approve. Alderman Gustafson, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Frank, would you like to come forward? Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Frank Novarini.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Illinois
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
and that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
the duties of
The duties of
Board of Fire and Police Commissioners
Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
to the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Frank.
All right. Takes us through our appointments. I have a couple things
Thank you.
under the mayor's report that I'd like to mention. First of all, I'd like to thank the Lions Club for their Candy Day effort this weekend and all those who stopped to make contributions. Many thanks to businesses in and outside of Darien that also made significant contributions to this effort. On Friday, October 7th, Kathy and I were the guests of the Filipino American Association of South DuPage for their 38th year anniversary celebration. I was honored to be asked to provide the keynote address that evening on diversity, acceptance, respect, and learning from one another. And then on Friday, October 14th, I was invited by Kingswood Academy to participate in their monthly seminar series. Our topic for the evening was leadership through community service. I had a wonderful opportunity, evening with the Kingswood parents and staff and would like to thank them for all they do for the families that they serve in the Darien community. And finally, Jermaine Moore, a Darien resident, recently informed us that her assistant-in-law, Donna Colacki, participated in a fun run for DePaul University. While training, she submitted a photo of our clock tower, which was featured in the DePaul University scrapbook. Donna completed her training for the event in Darien and money's raised go to the Finish Line Fund, which helps students who are close to graduating get their support, the support they need to finish their degrees. I just thought that was nice that she decided to submit a picture of our clock tower for that, for their scrapbook. So, somewhere in DePaul University is a scrapbook with a picture of our clock tower. None of us will ever see it, but it's there. All right. That takes me through my mayor's report, and then we go next to our city clerk's report. Joanne?
No report this evening, Mayor.
City administrator's report, Brian.
Report, Mayor. I, can I make one comment?
Yes.
I just, I, we did get the LRS monthly residential tracking report. And I did notice that 30% of the homes are enrolled in the senior program. And Frank, I just want to public, I just want to congratulate the city for not raising taxes since 2011. You know, with the high number of concentration of seniors in the city, it's a great, great thing that the city has done for the last few years.
Thank you, Eric. Well, it's, it's a statement of the quality of our staff and our budgeting and, and how we, how we operate as a city. All right. Department head, information and questions. Deputy Chief Norton?
I have no report.
May I make a comment? Not to, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Deputy Chief, you know, as of last Friday, in the United States, there were 271 police officers shot and 56 killed. Last week, 12 were shot and four were killed. You know, as a nation, we're unfortunately on a, on a track to set a horrible, horrible record. I heard a great comment on the news the other day, and it was a fact that one of the most important tools on an officer's belt is respect. And I think that's, unfortunately, right now, that's something that's in, in short supply. But Deputy Chief, I can safely say that your team has the respect of the entire city council.
Thank you.
And I think of the residents of the city of Darien. I hear a lot of comments, Jason, about how well-respected the Darien police are and how safe our residents feel compared to residents in some other communities. So, thank you.
The biggest reminder is for residents to call 911
Please.
when they have any police service.
Yes.
Often, I'll get a call from somebody on my line or third-hand from an alderman about an issue. And the police want you to call 911 for police service. It's on the record. They can respond and, and take care of it. But it's, sometimes it's hard for residents, but please call 911 if you need service.
And Deputy Chief, can I ask one question? If, if people do, for example, let's say they're complaining about a loud, loud dog barking that goes on forever. Can they call 911 and that be maintained as confidential so they don't get into a disagreement with their neighbor type of thing?
Absolutely. Most of the time, this thing's going on, right?
Push the button and talk? Better?
No, no.
Don't push the button. Fair enough. Yeah, absolutely. So, dial 911. If the caller wants to remain anonymous, we do our best. Obviously, if the neighbor's standing on the front lawn and they're screaming and yelling at one another, it's kind of hard for us to keep that anonymity. But we will not share your information in any capacity unless you so choose.
Okay.
Eric, it is different, though, on written communications. If we get emails, which we do get at the city hall sometimes,
Yeah.
they become public documents. And we have had some people in, in similar situations ask for the, the email or letter because emails are the same as letters now.
Okay.
So, we, we do try to remind people if, if they want to stay anonymous.
Call 911.
Call 911.
Yeah.
Or call even city hall if it's an, if it's an issue for city hall.
Okay, don't put it right.
Property maintenance issue. You know, and just call city hall and we'll still follow up.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Gondak.
No report, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions from the city council this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Gondak? If none, we'll go to our treasurer's report. Michael, warrant 222312.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 222312. The amount of $693,658.42 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended October the 6th and the amount of $279,127.72 for a total be approved of $972,786.14.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, Mike, if I could have one question, we already, we're not going to beat the 16-minute meeting, so I have a couple of questions. But maybe you can let the public know, you know, the, the city council gets this warrant and it's, it's all the bills. But what, what goes into that and how transparent we are in that? I know in the next newsletter, we're trying to inform residents about all of our finances. And when they see that here, it's gone through a lot of reviews. It might be helpful tonight if you can just do a quick one on that.
Yeah, actually, I've talked about it to quite a few residents. It's, it's interesting because right now, we're just approving very quickly this warrant with gross dollar amounts that you see in here. If you're more interested, if you go to our agenda that we have for tonight, it includes a packet of information for every check that I've signed a couple days ago, every bill that's being paid and every check that I've signed. Before I sign and approve those checks, though, it's already gone through several levels of review at the city. Different city department heads, even below department heads, before department heads. Then it goes to Brian. It's prepared by an accounts payables clerk. All the bills that are paid are referenced by invoice numbers, so hopefully there's no duplicate payments. And then I get the final review and sign off on them, and then I ask the council to review. And again, they get the packet of all those checks and everything, so they can raise questions. Usually, in a work session, some questions might come up about some of the payments, what it's for in particular. So, it's done that way, and then tonight is the final approval of those. And, I mean, there are rejections along the way. I'm not going to say everything's perfect. I mean, we do find issues, which just means that everybody along the way is doing their job. My only concern is if I'm catching it, then I'm the last one and I'm hoping that I've caught everything else there is. But I think it's a pretty thorough review. And then these numbers are also incorporated. Tonight, ordinarily, at this meeting, the second meeting of every month, we prepare the, we'll review the monthly financial statements, the monthly financial report. Our city accountant was out sick last week, so we don't have that on tonight's meeting. It'll be on next, our next meeting. And that basically takes all these expenses, as well as the revenue and everything, and prepares them in sort of a financial statement format. And again, those are available on the website and on the agenda. Anybody wants to see any time or raise any questions, feel free to contact me, Brian, or anyone. We're always open to answering those questions.
Our website has a pull-down tab that's called transparency. We can get all the financial information. And there's one more report, Mike, the annual treasures report, which it, which we publish in the paper and, and have on our website. It's a accumulation of all the expenses for the year. So, if we had $20,000 in various payments over the fiscal year to ABC Concrete, as an example, it will total that up and it will show the public what we spent on that company annually, which is a, a good recap to see what, where the money's getting spent also.
There's also detail of everybody's salaries in there if anybody's interested or curious.
All those higher amounts, right?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. It takes us, we didn't have a vote.
No, the roll. We have a first motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. That was Mike's presentation. Now, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn. Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The warrant has been approved. Standing committee reports. Any of the aldermen have reports? Alderman Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next municipal services committee will take place next Monday, October the 24th, at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. The next economic development committee meeting will be held on Thursday, November 3rd, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And the, usually the first city council meeting of the month has an admin finance committee meeting, pending agenda items. So, there will be no admin finance committee meeting on Monday, November 7th. So, the next one will be scheduled for, at this point, on Monday, December 5th.
Thank you, Mary. Mike?
The clerk just reminded me that the next police pension fund meeting is scheduled for November 3rd at 7:00 PM. Jason, I'm asking, is it 7:00 PM or has it changed again?
It's at 6:00.
It's at 6:00. Okay. Thank you. So, it's been changed to 6:00 o'clock. It historically has been at 7:00. So, it will be at 6:00 on November 3rd across the street in the police training room.
Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police committee meeting was canceled this evening due to lack of agenda items. Our next meeting is slated for Monday, November 21st, 6:30 PM across Parkland in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Anybody in the audience have any, any comments they'd like to make on our large agenda? If none, we'll go to old business. There being no old business, we go to consent agenda. There is no consent agenda. Takes us to new business. One item under new business. Consideration of a motion to approve the tax levy determination for general and special purposes for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And discussion. And Mr. Vanna, would you just like to recount how we have not raised this since?
Why don't you, Mayor? It's good news. You can bring.
Well, it, it is good news. I oftentimes brag, you know, when people talk about their real estate tax bill and they look at it. And I tell them, Darien is no more than 3% to 3.5% of their tax bill. We have not raised the tax levy since 2011. We went from 1997 to 2011 before we did that, and I think we did that because we had a bond that year.
I believe so.
And we have not raised that tax levy from 2011 till, and we will not raise it again this year. So, it's been the same for the last 11 years, and I think that's a credit to our city staff. That's a credit to our council or the councils that have served during that time. It's a, it, 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 the way, it's the way we handle business in the city of Darien. And I think it's to our credit, and I will tell you, as the president of DuPage Mayor's and Managers, I deal with a lot of other municipalities and other mayors. And I have to tell you that they're raising their tax levies. A lot of them are not in the same financial condition we are. So, I want the residents of Darien to know that you have a governmental body that's working diligently to make sure that you're not paying any more than what you're paying and you're still getting what I believe is excellent services. Anyone else want to comment on that?
I'm sorry, to add one nitty-gritty part of this, which the admin and finance committee talked about. The second part of this will be in March, we have a bond abatement where we will abate our water, both water bonds. And in addition, this will be, this year, we'll add this a bond abatement in the capital projects fund of $28,846. And that abatement is what keeps us exactly what the extension was last year. So, there's part two to this. That'll be done in, again, typically, we do it in, end of February, beginning of March.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have a question. I've, what I have in my book here says that it's a draft for this evening. Is that correct?
It's called the tax levy determination, yes.
Okay, but it's dated November of 2022. Is that correct? I mean, November 21st is what I, what I have on.
Where?
On the, the backup documents, the, the date for signature, it says that it's November 21st of 2022.
Under decision mode, it says.
For the ordinance. The ordinance is dated.
I have to find it and pull it up.
Page 41.
This final text of the ordinance will be in November 21st, 2022 city council meeting.
All my documentation says November 21st.
November 21st, yes.
Okay, so, we're not approving the ordinance. We're approving the.
This is, yeah, as, as it says in, it's, it's laid out. You'd have to read the agenda memo. And since you brought it up, I will, I will read it so everybody's clear on it. The, okay, it's in the first paragraph, I'll just read it. "The process for setting a tax levy is to determine how much revenue to collect from property tax and request that the county levy a tax to generate that amount of money. The first approval required is the tax levy determination, which takes place prior to the approval of the tax levy ordinance." So, on here, on the top of this, it says draft for tax levy determination. So, this is the draft and it will be approved, as it mentions in the memo, and on here, on the November date.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. Okay.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second.
Correct.
With that discussion, can we have the roll?
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn. Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The item has been approved. It takes us to question, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the Rotary Club of Darien is doing their recycling extravaganza, drive-through and drop-off. It's this Saturday, October 22nd, from 9:00 AM to noon at city hall. And, I mean, they are collecting, obviously, documents for shredding, tax bank and medical records. Please, no plastic, no batteries, no rubber bands, no big binder clips. Staples and paper clips are okay. They are also collecting many items and partnering with organizations like SCAR, Darien Lions Club, DuPage County on syringes, EpiPins, bikes, bike repair tools, bike baskets, tire pumps, medical equipment like walkers, crutches and canes, eyeglasses, hearing aids, household keys, cell phones, and a lot of books, records, musical instruments. So, on the city website, you can see all the items, but, you know, time to, you know, make some great donations to these organizations and get some shredding done. And secondly, Cass 63 will be hosting three community forums regarding their upcoming referendum on the November 8th ballot. That's Cass School District 63, which includes Concord Elementary and Cass Junior High. They do have a Zoom this Thursday, October 20th, at 6:30. And then on Tuesday, October 25th, there will be a meeting at Cass Junior High at 6:30. And then on Wednesday, October 26th, there will be a meeting at the Indian Prairie Public Library. And these, purposes of these presentations is to not tell people how to vote, but to be transparent and provide accurate information about the plans and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I just want to just remind everybody, as she indicated, to vote on November 8th. There's critical political positions. There's a workers' right amendment and there's a cuff-up referendum. So, educate yourself and please vote.
I would like to remind everyone that the Darien Lions Club will be holding their annual Halloween party at the Darien Sportsplex on Sunday, October 30th. I believe they start at about 6:00 o'clock in the evening. The Sportsplex is open for use.